First and foremost, I think that it's important for us to make a comment, particularly about these recent occurrences in our country. And one of the things that really troubled me, I just got back from Peru when I heard this, of what happened in Charlottesville, the tragedy, the sadness that that caused in my family and the people that I was with in Peru, because we see that this is such a dangerous thing to do now. For those people hurt and for the lives that were lost, would you just like to spend a moment of silence? Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask our city manager to read a very special statement.
The Long Beach City Council and its city manager clearly and unequivocally condemn and denounce the violence orchestrated by white supremacists and neo-Nazis. As government officials, we join with our counterparts across the country to remind President Trump that hate and bigotry is not an issue of many sides, but a simple example of right and wrong that runs contrary to American values. Just as when we stood together last year when we hosted a vigil fall for tragic shooting in Orlando, we recognized that there was only one side, and we silently stand together against hate, terror, and violence in all its forms.
Thank you. Just want to give you a few reminders before we get started. The first thing is that, as you can see, during our meeting, we asked that you sign up for Good and Welfare and that you not let the meeting end before you do that, because we feel that we need to have folks ready, ready, and willing to be part of ours at our Good and Welfare at the end of the meeting, we need you to sign up for that now. The other thing is that we are going to stick very strictly to the three-minute limit. And the reason is very clear, not everyone gets a chance to speak, and it's unfair when people go beyond the three minutes that we have really set forth for everyone. And we do want to hear from everyone, so really think very carefully of what you want to say, because you're just going to get the three minutes, so we're going to remind you that your three minutes will be up. The other thing is that, you know, you may not like what some people say, but they have a right to say it. And it doesn't mean that we can heckle them, that we can call them names and boo them, and that's not what we do here in Long Beach, and we will not permit that. And I will very, very strongly sound with that from happening here. And finally, you know, the last thing, and I think it's everything that we all stand for, we encourage everyone to participate in government, to be a part of this whole process that we have. We may not be able to answer every question for legal reasons or because we don't have an answer, but we certainly will try to get back to you. And that's one of the good things about signing up in the first month, is we can get back to you. And with that, I'm going to ask our city clerk, Vida Guma, to get us started. The husband and children, folks, have a little bit of jet lag, and we have a couple of proclamations, if we could all join us downstairs to present these. You'll have to choose all the improvisation tonight. One of the things that we, I just got, we, I just got back from Latin America this morning, and I didn't sleep all night, just got a little nap. And so you're not too soon to be punching right now. But one of the things that we enjoy doing is to recognize folks in this community for their contribution, I think they do children particularly. And with that, to give the presentation, I'm going to ask Justice Moore, who asked, would you?
Thank you, Councilwoman Morris, and good evening to everyone. I think if we asked anyone in this room, "What really makes Long Beach special?", you could say, "All of you, the residents." And so, on a daily basis, I think we can all argue or we can all support the fact that it's all about small acts of kindness that can really transform our community. And I'm so glad to be a part of a community as strong as you, that really begins to extend kindness and compassion and empathy towards one another. And so this evening, it's with great pleasure that I present this particular proclamation to Janice Moore. Many of you, if you're not familiar with her work, she works quietly as the vice chair of the MLK Inc. And for several years, she dedicated her service with the hopes of really transforming the North Park community. And what makes this individual special is the fact that she works quietly. Many of us work, and we expect other people to recognize us. It's those individuals, like all of you sitting in the audience, that just do what's right and just decide to work for that or any type of action. And so tonight, I wanted to present this award because of the fact that she's willing to work diligently and quietly, but working with impact. So many of you had the opportunity to attend the MLK dinner, and this year, we were honored to have Dr. Luther King in our midst. And once again, Ms. Moore was a significant participant in making sure that we had such a successful event. And then secondly, she is also the co-chair of the Robert Morris Foundation. This is a significant foundation, not only to the North Park community, but also to the entire Long Beach community in terms of their hopes to transport the lives of many young people through asthma awareness, through, once again, the giveaway of school supplies during the semester and the upcoming semester. They have a planned event now on Labor Day where they will once again engage the Rock Day. Many of you are familiar with that day, and we hope that you will also give some supplies and contribute to this tremendous event. But once again, this foundation, I believe her husband is also here, this couple works tirelessly within this community to make a difference. And so today, I'd like for Janice to come forward and be recognized as our reading this proclamation. We have a serious call to recognize those individuals and organizations that have contributed continuously to the people and the community at large. And whereas the City of Long Beach does desire to publicly acknowledge Janice Moore, the co-founder of the Robert Morris Foundation and vice chair of the MLK Inc. for her many years of selfless community service, and whereas the Robert Morris Foundation is dedicated to asthma awareness and who sponsors Rock Day, providing free haircuts and hairstyles and school supplies for children in the North Park area, and now and therefore, the city council and the city manager of the City of Long Beach in recognition of her exemplary service to the community, present this proclamation to Janice Moore. Lynn Torres, council president, Anthony Aramo, council vice president, Hube Diamond, council member, Scott Mendel, council member, Alistair DeMora, and Jack Shearman, our city manager. Congratulations for all that you do for making an impact to our community.
So I have the intention of giving this proclamation to a special group of employees who are joined together. One of the things that would be valued here in Long Beach in addition to our diversity and coming together as a community of our beach and ensuring that as many people as possible have access to our beach. And just a couple weeks ago, as many of you saw in the newspaper, a group of our organized employees got together and donated to the city a very generous gift of some additional mob events to allow for that additional amount of access to members of our community. So I would like to bring out our president of our commanding officers association. I'm just going to read what the proclamation says. Whereas the City of Long Beach holds a great esteem and wishes to recognize those who have contributed to the community and have dedicated their lives to this service of helping others. And whereas the City of Long Beach does desire to publicly acknowledge the commanding officers association in recognition of their generous donation of a new 50-foot mob event, which will be added to our pre-existing fleet of each match. Now and therefore, the city council and the city manager are in recognition of their exemplary service to the community, proudly present this proclamation to the commanding officers association. To you on your behalf. Signed, Lynn Torres, council president, Anthony Aramo, council vice president, Hube Diamond, council member, Scott Mendel, council member, Alistair DeMora, council member, and our city manager, Jack Shearman. Thank you.
Okay, again, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thanks to those that contributed to our community like they do. I'm going to ask our city clerk to begin our meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach Health Tuesday, August 15th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Diamond?
Here.
Councilmember Mendel is not present. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Aramo?
Yes.
President Torres?
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Council City Attorney Jack Shearman and Corporation Councilwoman Robert Addison. We will now have the floor to the slide.
... We must then add the flag allegiance.
Sure.
Flag allegiance to the flag. The United States are instituted Republic of America in one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I'm going to ask our city manager to give us our city update.
Mr. Shearman. Recently, city partner with AT&amp;T, when they had their It Can Wait simulator on the boardwalk. Simulator was their approach to experience the dangers of distracted driving through virtual reality. This exhibit was located on the boardwalk as part of a national tour, allowing the public to experience firsthand how dangerous it is to take your eyes off the road and direct them onto your phone. Also recently, we're proud to host National Night Out here at Kennedy Plaza. The event was part of a national program with the goal of raising awareness in our community and focusing on prevention of drug use, prevention of crime, and standing together as a community. Earlier this month was the sixth annual Long Beach International Film Festival. It was filled with great events, including Taste on the Beach, Shorts on the Beach, plenty of celebrities in town, like Steve Shariba from The Sopranos, former USA champion Chris Weidman, and Nancy Cartwright, who is best known as the voice of Bart Simpson. There was a great turnout on Saturday for the 14th Annual Curve Bike Ride Around Long Beach. And on Sunday, folks turned out for the Long Beach Lions Club's Duck Club here at Kennedy Plaza. We have so many fun, family-friendly events in Long Beach all summer long. For instance, Fun in the Park takes place every weekday at a different park. And we have our three concerts on the beach each week. Coming up this Saturday, August 19th, from 4:10, all invited for the city's special Baytown Celebration at the Recreation Center. The event is a celebration of music, food vendors, kids' activities, and field day, introducing our fall recreation program, all watching a spectacular Long Beach sunset over the bay. For more information, call the rec, 431-3890, or visit longbeachny.org/reck. City will also host the fifth annual Lifeguard Memorial Swim this Sunday, August 20th, at 9:00 a.m. on National Boulevard Beach. Please to announce that we've added a half-mile component to the race. For those who love to swim at night, might not be ready for the full one mile. The event is in honor of all deceased men and women who served on the Long Beach Lifeguard Patrol. All swimmers over the age of 16 who can swim one mile in 55 minutes or less are invited to participate. For more information, call 431-3890 at the rec. And finally, the Recreation Center will be closing temporarily beginning August 26th for their annual maintenance, which will provide a more enjoyable experience for all rec members. Long Beach Rec Center is scheduled to reopen in early September. Please to announce that arrangements have been made to use other facilities during this time to offer our members uninterrupted service during the closure. Everyone with an LV rec membership is entitled to utilize the facilities at the JCC, the Oceanside, and the Freeport Recreation Center. Visit longbeachny.org/reck for more details, I should say. And finally, the city would like to thank all of the students who participated in this summer's Long Beach High School internship program here in City Hall. Program focuses on diversity, instilling leadership, engaging youth, our community, and introducing high school students to a professional work environment. Our interns were assigned to several different departments, they're given various tasks, and organizing, including organizing a free field day at the Martin Luther King Center. Our interns also participated in workshops where guest speakers came in to discuss financial responsibility, professional attire, resume building, and college application. So again, thank you all, thank you to all who helped out this summer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shearman. We don't want to move right into our meeting.
First item is public hearing. The first public hearing is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements regarding premises 156 East Park Avenue, Street 4, Long Beach, New York, regarding the gas form.
Okay. With that, I open the hearing. Is there a representative of the company that has put in this application? Welcome, folks. You just need your name for the record, and I have some questions I will ask you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Christina Mardre. My husband is Richard Schala, and I'm Keela Jacobson. And we are a Chinese army job shop.
Ah, great, great. Now, maybe you can do us a little description of the scope of the kind of business that you're hoping.
Absolutely. So the very first time, I've clientele here for a while now. Keela and I are stylists, Richard and me, for us. And we're hoping to open up an eco-friendly salon. So everything in a salon, or if it's going to be sustainable, recycle. Everything from our hair clippings to color canisters, anything that's possibly kind of recycled, we'll be recycling.
Right.
Which, for us, is a truly important, we're really, you know, hopeful that that's the first one actually around here, so.
Right. And how many employees do you work with?
Um, right now, just three of us, we're a small salon. I mean, we're hoping if things go well, we can, you know, do about five of us. So I mean, it's not, it's not a lot of us, but it's the only occasion.
And the hours of operation are?
Uh, 10 to 6, and with the exception of, it's Tuesday for Friday, Tuesday for Friday will be 10 to 6, and Saturday will be 9 to 5.
Okay, and do you expect any Wall Street deliveries at any time?
Um, once a month, we'll have a delivery, but they're generally just a couple of blocks. It's not like a whole shop, it's an actual, just a band that delivers. It's not like we need to block all the streets. But as far as us, we all do it jointly, so we're, I'm sorry.
Great, nice, that's very nice. The last question, and this will be, you know, of course, a question that we hope to be able to share with everyone, is that if you are interested in having a bicycle rec place in front of your.
We are.
Very good, okay, we'll know that, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Is that something that we provide, or is that something that we, like, how does that work?
Well, the city will provide it, but it is a cost, of course, and it's always a cost. So we'll let you know exactly when that will be, and how that's going to be done, in a second. We encourage you to stay with us for a little while, so you can vote, and you'll know exactly.
We love to say it.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you, welcome. Are there any comments from the council on this permit? Any comments from the public? Okay, ladies, thank you so much, and we'll have a decision very shortly. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the hearing on that permit.
Second public hearing is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements regarding premises 50 West Park Avenue, Street 4, Long Beach, New York, regarding retail T-Mobile store.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open the hearing on T-Mobile. Is there a main representative of T-Mobile here? Very good, sir, please go forward, welcome. We, again, we need your name, and I'm just going to ask a couple of questions. Good to see you here, sir, to see all the usual businesses, yes?
I'm Mr. Jason Irokei.
And maybe you can give us a little description of what the scope of the business is,
in terms of the T-Mobile, and the wireless type of telephone.
Okay. Very good, very good. And how many employees would you?
Six employees.
Now, do you anticipate any Wall Street parking deliveries at any time?
Deliveries, uh, once a day, maybe about three minutes.
Okay. And the hours of operation?
Yep, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, very good. And I think that pretty much covers my questions. And are there any comments from the, from the council? No? Any comments from the public on the T-Mobile? Yes, yes, it's fine, Chad. Good to see you. Welcome.
Lynn, you didn't ask about the bike rec.
Well, I do love, you know.
Like, not just for our customers, but for employees, so short-term and long-term parking. I'm curious about that, but also you mentioned deliveries, and you mentioned that's only three minutes. This is right for outside of what we're asking, right? That's a real problem space for deliveries, so I'm constantly having to negotiate, like, my life around delivery trucks outside of, like, Two D Prudy and all the other stores there. So when you are, when you say 30 minutes, it takes 3 seconds for me to make, and they're killed, because I'm trying to negotiate around trucks. So exactly as far as the delivery question goes, when are these deliveries? Is there, um, you know, I'm curious about that. Can these deliveries, aren't they supposed to come between certain hours? Don't we have some kind of municipal code about deliveries?
Which is a question.
And can, can these deliveries meet those codes? Um, you know, I'm very concerned about that, and people double parking there, because you're going to be getting a lot of business from outside of Long Beach as well. So there is going to be a lot of traffic coming into that kind of store, and I want to make sure that I'm not buying suicide, so someone can buy itself from Long Beach anyway.
Just one check point, very well made. And of course, the, the last question that I have for you, and I know you made more comment on what, on what Chad just said.
Are there specific hours that are for you to be, if you have, is it advisory?
No, Mike is object, I can be back.
Is there a preference?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's always a preference, not there.
Well, there is, yeah, you can't dominate as well.
I'm sorry.
There's a preference for the public.
Okay, great. Great, great. Okay, and the last question, I see you have not, uh.
Bike rec.
Yes, you may be to the bike rec.
I have to try to find for some people bike rec this time.
Okay, very good, very good. And you're, you're entitled to do it.
I appreciate you, Mike.
Sure. Okay, we encourage you to stay, well, let's for a little while, and see if we can get this vote done, and you'll know exactly what's going to happen here. Okay. Are there any other comments? Mr. Guslow? Absolutely, come on up. Welcome, Mr. Guslow.
Hello, good evening, Jay Guslow. I mentioned the last meeting, I know it was a while ago, I know Mr. Accretation was away, that this store, as it's currently situated, is not eligible for its various applications to be heard by zoning board, I'm sorry, by the city council. It's my understanding, and I think it was confirmed by Mr. Countess at the last meeting, that only storefronts of 20 feet or less are eligible to come before the city council in order to get any kind of relief from any of the zoning boards. This store I did visit before I came up tonight, and it hasn't been subdivided. It is far in excess of 20 feet. And to the best of my knowledge, it hasn't been subdivided, divided two addresses beyond the one address that identifies the entire stretch of stores. So did you guys just disregard what I brought up last month? Was there some research done, or why are we here? Seems to me that you guys are pretty clearly seeking your authority on maintaining this application. Hey, but we're just going to go forward like we did last month, even though we don't need legal authority to do it.
This is your comment, and, uh, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Guslow, thank you. Folks, uh, we welcome people's comments. And again, uh, is there any comment, Matt, please go up? Yes, you have to come to the phone, to the mic, and state your name.
Okay, is there a bike rec about?
You have to state your name, Matt.
Tony Curtis. Is there a law in Long, in the City of Long Beach about bikes being ridden on the sidewalks?
Is it written? Yes.
Are they allowed to ride on sidewalks?
No, they're not.
What? No. So why are people riding on sidewalks?
I don't know that's necessarily this item.
What do you mean?
Meaning this item is not an all-queue archive, it's not T-Mobile.
Oh.
Yeah, you can.
Can I bring up the bikes?
You can, you can bring that up in Good and Welfare, and we encourage that.
Like, if they win?
In Good and Welfare, the end of the week, you have to sign up for that before the end of the week, and we will absolutely welcome your comments.
So I can discuss this with you tonight?
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
President Torres, if we can go back to the specific time of day it was never specified, or the respective owner, and second, can we just have confirmation with respect to what you just said, that we're covered legally if we're making a decision?
Sure. The, uh, the schedule of the hours of operation, we did get that on record, right?
The time of delivery?
And of course, the time of delivery is a very good question, I think that is my chat, yes. Do we, I think that part of the answer is that the T-Mobile people comply with whatever we said, but is there a set schedule for deliveries, Mr.?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, there's no set schedule yet, okay. Okay, fine. Okay, are there any other comments on this T-Mobile application for Wall Street parking? Okay, then I'm going to close the hearing again.
I'm waiting for the answer to the second question.
Okay, he asked, I think you're, so, did you repeat the?
No, I'm asking for, I'm asking for corporate companies to confirm.
Oh, I think there is something in the code about it, but to be honest, if you write on it, I'm not sure what the exact hours are, I don't want him to speak on that.
I think the question had to do with the 20 feet.
Oh, that, and this is the first I've heard of that issue. It goes around, that's news to me, but there is something in the code that reflects what he, what he just discussed.
Okay, so, so then, President Torres, let's watch the motion that we tabled this item, until we have all of the information that's necessary to make a sound decision.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, folks?
How, how's that a motion?
Very good, okay.
On the vote? And the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Bike rec number Aramo?
And my vote is yes, to table it, so we'll have clarification on the legal aspects of it. But, sir, I just want to let you know that we do welcome business, and we do not want that vacant, and I hope we get this straightened out shortly, so you can open up your business in time of matter. Michael Chad.
President Torres?
Uh, I too agree with Mr. Aramo. We want to encourage businesses to come to Long Beach, and, uh, but again, we want folks to know that we will adhere to the code. And yes, while Mr. Accretation was not here, this was brought. And yes, while Mr. Rattan Dacey was not here, this was brought up before and again, we do need clarification on that, so I'm gonna vote yes to table. With that, I'm gonna close the hearing. I do.
President Torres, before we continue, why don't we go on, I don't ever want a resolution so that the London ladies can go.
Okay, sure, we can do that, do we? Very good.
Does we have a motion?
Yes.
On the vote, Captain Member Dinan?
Yes.
Captain Member Moore?
Yes, I'm welcome.
Vice President Rambo?
Yes, it sounds like it's gonna be ready to vote.
President Torres?
And again, welcome ladies, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be great for business, you have to give your, my vote is absolutely yes. Okay, very good.
Okay, number one, the resolution regarding West Street Parking required regarding President's 150 West Street Park Avenue, Street 4, Long Beach, New York regarding the air count, and here it has been held on this item already. And both of them. Resolution reg, so resolution regarding West Street Parking required regarding President's 150 West Street Park Avenue, Street 4, Long Beach, New York regarding retail T-Mobile store, here it has been held on this item already. Third item is resolution authorized city manager to accept charitable donation.
Okay, I was discussing earlier with the proclamation, the Manning Officer Association of the Long Beach Police Department has purchased a 15-foot section of 5-foot wide mobicad as well as a 16.5-foot section of 5-foot wide mobicad weight to donate to the city to be used at the Ocean Beach Park and the city is appreciative.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments on this donation, folks, here at the council? Any comments from the public on this donation that we're receiving here that we would be excited? Okay, those good to accept things. We just have to form a unit. Okay, thank you.
Fourth item is resolution authorized city manager to enter into a agreement for engineering designs and construction administration services for the rehabilitation of 100 block of West Market Street between National and Main Hill Boulevard.
Okay, this is the first step apart for the real rehabilitation of the 100 block of West Market Street. Funding is provided through the capital improvement plan and this is part of the city continuing initiative to accelerate road resurfacing in our community.
Okay, are there any comments on this item, number four, from the council? Any comments from the public on this resurfacing and report what we need to do? Okay, welcome on to our next item.
Number five is resolution authorized city manager to enter into a agreement for engineering services needed for the preparation of bulkhead permitting and contract.
Okay, the city is desirous of continuing the bulkhead program which offers residents the opportunity to have the city repair or replace their damaged bulkhead caused by super strong sanding. Cost of work will be financed by the city and residents can make payments over as many as 20 years. I call our Commissioner of Public Works to give us an overview of the resolution and a presentation on the larger project this relates to.
We're gonna have to set up a screen to talk about that.
Oh, yeah, did I get it? Okay.
Tech, can you be up there?
Eric Will.
Okay. Gonna introduce the Vice President of Petra Tech, Michael Bullock, who's gonna help you with this presentation. Michael is the project engineer on the North Shore Bulkhead Project. Okay, first, I know this is gonna be welcome news to some residents that have private bulkhead and to some other residents it's gonna be a little bit of a disappointment. Due to circumstances beyond the city's control, we were forced into a position where we need to change the North Shore Bulkhead Project from a private bulkhead project to a public bulkhead project. And in anticipation of the kind of questions that was gonna raise, the city started comparing the answers while we worked with GOER and the CRP Committee to make the changes. So the first question, will the city be contracted with a consultant to design private bulkhead and take the proper permit? As you've heard, we've just presented that resolution tonight for the council and, yes, they're gonna do that. We had requested proposals from this from qualified engineering firms in February, it's agenda number five that we're talking about now, and we're recommending L.A. complaint associates be awarded the contract. This cost that residents take advantage of the design of bulkhead will be funded over 20 years and paid annually as a property tax charge. Question two, will the city still be offering on private bulkhead over a 20-year period? Yes, that program will continue. Formal information can be available on the website. You must use the city contractor to take advantage of the 20-year bond and you will admit one contract that you will have to take advantage of because unfortunately it would be illegal for the city to bond the work of a private contractor. The property tax charge would go to the new property owner in the event of a sale, so that person taking over property that had no bulkhead put in would then be responsible. The owner could use a contractor, they were all gonna use our design and our permitting engineer, but legally we couldn't bond across the project. Question number three, will the city cover the cost of the public bulkhead? Will we transfer $12,450,000 of funds from GOER which was gonna be used on a private bulkhead to the public bulkhead? Our critical disstructure bulkhead, which is the bulkhead that's gonna run from the recreation dock down to the tennis court, protect the water plant, the wastewater plant, North Park area, that is being funded and it's very close to going into bid as soon as we have a hook for the town and Hampstead for their portion, that will be going out of the city, construction will start very shortly. In our five-year capital plan this past year, we've included $8 million of public bulkhead over the period, so the city is very committed to getting all the public bulkhead done. Question number four, is New York Rising Residential Bulkhead Program still available? We've already contacted the Governor's Office and State Lieutenant Kaminsky and we've requested assistance for residents and this effort is ongoing, we're hoping to extend this program as we did with the New York Rising Program. And the last question, we really don't have an answer for yet, on some of the right-of-ways of the bulkhead, homeowners have built docks, disabled, all kinds of things, we can't answer this question yet because we're just gonna be in early stages of design, so once we know what the impact of these structures are, we'll have a better handle on that and we'll revisit that. Okay, now this time it asks Michael to come up and he is going to explain why we needed to make this change.
Thank you, John. Good to be here tonight, give me the update. We are going to be looking at the bulkhead as part of the North Shore Bulkhead and reviewing what our firm's scope of work is for the city and providing a status where that stands as well as looking forward, the schedule toward the design and permitting, so I just said, all these things are going to cover. So our scope of work included getting the bulkhead to the point that it could be advertised for bids, so permits would be in hand, the design would be completed, then you would go out for bids and then oversee the construction, that is our scope of work. For the last 18 months, we were, we had moved ahead in the planning services, surveying services, as well as we've done geotechnical investigations for us out there, and we were in the permitting and design phase, we got up through the 40% complete design and I will give you an update of where that went from the standpoint of the permitting and design moving in forward. So we had back in March, public meeting number one, where we went through the scope of this project with four stations, we identified the background, existing conditions, the different flood resiliency zones in the city and looked at the overall bulkhead construction and that was probably maybe the last thing the public saw on this project. Moving forward, we identified existing conditions and the need for the project, you guys are very well aware of that, but that's where the surveying, the geotechnical investigations and planning services came in. The flood resiliency zones, majority of the city is in the extreme risk, which is the red area, or the high hazard zone, which is the orange area, so this is the west side of the city, this is the east side of the city, so you can see the majority of the city primarily lies in those two flood resiliency zones. As we went through the design phase and worked with the city staff, we came up with some areas of concern or points of concern. The first of which, as many of you know, it's not a straight shot across the North Shore. So this would cause turns for the contractor and different access points, so the majority of the construction would have to be from the water, so that elevated construction costs. We also started looking at the dock access point, so this would not included in the scope of work with GOER to redo the dock access point, so that would also escalate the cost of the project. The public, I'm sorry, the private benefits on the private property, there's multiple improvements from decks to actually buildings and structures and hot tubs and swimming pools, so the ability to do a typical bulkhead design where you would have tiebacks and then anchors on the landside was limited for this design and all the work would have to be from the water, a vertical construction where sheet pile would go into the ground and then a cap would be put on, so that escalated the cost of construction. The method to put the sheet pile into the ground with a push-in method because of getting proximity to all the improvements on private property would not allow vibrating or pounding sheet pile into the ground, so that also escalated the price for construction. So as we went back and we looked at the funding mechanism, we kept updating the design and we would prepare an opinion of construction cost, compared that to the funding available to the city through the New York Rising Program and that funding, as John already mentioned, is $12.45 million. As we started looking at all of these conditions and issues associated with construction, our estimate was more than $1,000, roughly $28 million to do this North Shore construction project. So that, at the 40% design prompted staff to go back to GOER and look at how this money could actually be implemented to the city committee, and so that's where we currently are. And how we got there is basically because of the funding available to do a bulkhead project. So now, where we are headed is to focus on where the public right-of-way are in the street shown here, so this is the west end of the city, it's roughly 700 linear feet if you were to add all these dozen or so areas together from Ohio down to Pennsylvania to bulkhead the ends of those right-of-way. The city has the ability to go in without easement, temporary construction easement, and do these improvements and would also protect the end of the public infrastructure. And the central part goes from Washington down to Magnolia, this is all public right-of-way, so this bulkhead would get redone in order to protect the North Shore, so this is roughly 2,300 linear feet of bulkhead. And then on the east end, at two canals, that Aaron and Doyle, this is 3,600 linear feet, so this is existing public right-of-way. In many cases, the bulkhead has failed, the soil is washing into the canals and there's the issue of utilities up and down that right-of-way as well as the asphalt getting washed away in order to serve the public benefit to put the bulkhead in these locations. So with that change in scope of the overall project, assuming, you know, we push restart and GOER has approved reallocating this money for public bulkhead at this location, the design, preliminary planning, all those efforts would start back up again, regulatory permitting would start in the spring of 2018, we would be looking at commencing construction roughly in a year with anywhere from 12 to 18 months construction period after that, so this is kind of where we are looking to go based on this new scope of work.
Thanks, Mike. And I guess the first thing that sticks out is that the, on the canals, we showed the canals being done, the city would be doing the plans and bidding of the third canal as part of our capital plan. So we tried to answer as many questions as we thought there might be out there, just wanted to ask the city council if they have any questions.
Now, what's going to happen with the last canal? I mean, has that been, after the?
Yes, the last canal is gonna be paid through the capital, the five-year capital program and we have $2 million in the budget for the first year of that, so. It's only one side canal, the other side will provide a bulkhead.
Any other questions on the council?
Oh, just in case, I'm sorry, I try not to get up in acronyms with GOER, it's the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery who work closely with the CRP Committee which was made up of members of Long Beach who recommended, citizens of Long Beach who had recommended some of these projects. This in no way either affects the drainage projects that go along with it, this grant from GOER will be still dealing with five of those drainage projects also simultaneously.
No, let me get this straight, we're looking at redoing the bulkhead. Just wanna make sure we're getting this straight, we're looking at redoing the entire north side of Long Beach from the canal all the way to Washington, but the initial work will be where the utilities are, where we have the drinking plant, where we have the electrical, the gas line, over here, the North Park area will be done first, is that correct?
That's correct, and that's the project that's being done under the theme of four authentication work, but this project can start before that's over. So, you know, once this is out to bid and we have a contractor and it's awarded, even no matter where we are in that project, we will start this project, they should not interfere with each other. Yes, if anybody proposed this question?
If you do, call Mike there.
Mike right here. Mike's right here.
Sir, Kevin Fox, 1005 West Park Avenue, and a little on the pocket. Just a clarification, is the intention to do the entire North Bulkhead or not, Commissioner?
We will be doing, between all the projects that we have lined up, the entire North Bulkhead will be done with the exception of private homes.
Okay, so the entire North Bulkhead is with the exception of private home owners. Correct, okay, so I would like that clarification, I remember you, thank you very much, and anything you do. Do you understand the absurdity? I cannot be the first person to have talked about the absurdity of doing the public bulkheads and not doing the private bulkheads. Do you know what water is? Do you understand what water is? Do you understand what water is? Yes, I would like to, I understand you did the fire department. Uh, it is on, I think, the west side fire department. You did, I believe, it's ten foot as the, as the, as the base from where you're going to go. Do you understand the absurdity of doing the public bulkheads and not doing the private bulkheads? Water is water. I would love to be a good public citizen and move my bulkheads up and I would pay for it, to move my bulkhead up. But if I did it and if my neighbor on my right and my neighbor on my left didn't do it, why would I do that? And what, I cannot, Mr., I guess, this, I can't be the first person that's come forward to talk about this absurdity of this stuff. You understood it. You finally understood the prohibitive course of trying to do the entire thing. I got that. You probably understood the absurdity of not doing it when in town of Penn State wasn't going to do it either. So when we stopped at Nevada Avenue, the water would still come in. I got that. But we're still going forward with this absurdity of a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to do something very, very noble for protection of Long Beach, for spending a lot of money for the protection of Long Beach when we're talking about, and you didn't even do the fire department, correct? So, Mr. Aron, where do you live? Where do you live? Where is the, where's the flood zone in your, I live on Michigan. I live on West Park and Michigan. I would raise my bulkhead twenty feet if we protect Long Beach. Do you expect me to pay where my neighbors will not?
I'm sorry.
Fine, thank you very much.
Yes, we certainly welcome your comments. And we appreciate what you, what you're saying. We agree that, you know, water goes wherever it can. Where it's, it's opportunistic. You're absolutely right. We're concerned about that, too. We are, we're very concerned. However, we, you know, we are limited in our money. And, you know, we want to be able to begin this project. And so we're hoping that we will be able to help out the private owners of these bulkheads. But right now, we don't have the answer. We don't have the answer, sir. Any other comments, sir? Okay. Oh, Mr. Duba. And then you'll be next, Mike. Good to see you, Mr. Duba. No, he's a concern that we all have.
Welcome back. This is my fiftieth time talking about the bulkhead.
Yes.
Um, I actually agree with the gentleman about that because unless you do the whole thing, you know, everybody's saying, you know, it's just, it's the weak link in the chain, if so to speak.
Yes.
My comment, though, is talk about New York Rising. You've opened again to get funding. Problem with New York Rising, it's been all along, that they never considered bulkhead. They consider bulkhead to be duplication benefits. Duplication benefits means that the insurance company, the insurance, will pay if they're not communicating, same thing with the elevation. If Senator Schumer and Tom Mitzi and the governor, if they convince New York Rising that this bulkhead is not duplication benefits, then it's not. I mean, and that's the whole point of insurance. Insurance will not, they, they insure for the house, they don't insure for the property. Not duplication benefits. But all along, they have told us that that is, you know, in all the reports that we've got, it's duplication benefits in the bulkhead. So that's, that's an important part to try and get across to the, to New York Rising.
Mr. Duba, I think we completely agree with that perspective. And in fact, I would ask you to give to our public works folks some of the, some of the experience that you've had on that. I think that would help us significantly in our advocacy on the issue as, as we have requested of, of Gozer that they look into, with the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, that they look into the ability to reopen their program to find a pot of money to take care of whatever private bulkhead needs to be affected. Because we did hear over a period of time from many who didn't want this project on their private bulkhead. And we certainly hear from, from someone like you who, you know, certainly.
I'm disappointed, but I, I can't get, you know, we're with you on it.
And so I think it would help in, in our discussions with, with Gozer to document, I wouldn't hope that we remember that.
Well, not only remembering, I can show you the, the ERC, CCR, whatever it was, showing that, you know, benefits with, for bulkhead is duplication benefits. It says that clearly on all the documentation that I've commissioned that, you know, to put high paper on.
Yeah.
If you make enough of all this, then maybe find a way to pull the paper. Yeah, no, I'm glad these apply to the.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Yes, man, please go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you, my name is Camille Toleady. And also, owner on the home of the hillside, I have a bulkhead. I think it's noble that the city of Long Beach is starting to offer to those homeowners the opportunity to, to run themselves, to pay for it, but over a twenty-year period for the surplus. But to me, that's not an incentive. Why would I do it and my neighbors don't do it? And for what reason would I incur thousands and thousands of dollars worth of cost just to be able to pay it over a twenty-year period? It doesn't make any sense. You need a better incentive if you really want to protect the whole West End and whoever else is on those waters, to give them a better incentive to go ahead and take advantage of that, such as a tax break or a tax evasion. Because without that, no one is really going to do it. And, and you need to have something more for somebody to bite. Otherwise, it's obvious to say, I won't do it. I won't do it because, to me, I'm not going to spend all that money even if I spend it over twenty, twenty years and then my neighbors don't do it. If you want people to do it, you need to offer something better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent comment. And, you know, I guess my question to Mr. Brando is, um, in factoring in the private bulkheads that are out there, what are we looking at? What kind of projected cost would then add to this? I think people need to know that.
Well, you know, we have to look at their individual case depending on how the bulkhead is going to be done. Because of the temporary construction easements and because, you know, of the other structures on people's properties, the price of the bulkhead would be driven up to almost three thousand dollars a foot. Homeowners could certainly get more traditional type bulkhead using tiebacks and things like that to bring that cost way down. So it would have to be on an individual basis depending on what, what type of structures exist on their property or how close their structure is to the bulkhead.
Pretentably is an increase that we're looking at, substantial.
Um, do what the public bulkhead is going to, you know, remember, each thing that we do is part of a bigger program to try and protect the entire city. Just like the Army Corps project on and on now, the bulkhead project, these other drainage projects we'll be doing, the other hardening of critical facilities. These are all things we have money for. So to not take advantage and get as much done as possible is, is also, would also be a mistake.
Are there any other comments from the public? Yes, uh, let's see, sir. Well, it's good to see you. Welcome.
I just have a question about the volcanic canals because you talked about the fact that you could not, you don't have a plan yet to deal with the destruction. We know that that's in the own property, all the property across the street from the homes and you're going to be working on the bulkhead. There are people, and I'm not making a statement for or against it. I'm just making a statement that people have spent enormous amount of money, whether that's right or not, to use city property for their own use. But that's something that's going to end up being something that you're really going to have to deal with at some point. Because, I mean, people have their deep debt, all kinds of hook, electric and all kinds of things. So I'm hoping that, you know, that.
And that's why we really have to wait for the design because depending on the type of structures we run across, will depend on the type of bulkhead that we will put in. If we're a bulkhead, the D C or the Army Corps will allow us to put in.
Right, and then you're going to have to go to the individual homeowners, I guess, and just, or whatever. I mean, it'll obviously be the same for everybody, but it's just something you should really have to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent point. Oh, Ms. Lake, yes. Welcome, Ms. Lake. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. This is Lake, two oh six East Market Street. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I wanted to speak briefly about future existing conditions and opportunities, but mainly the first. As the city prepares for future storms, hurricanes, climate change, warming, et cetera, the Oceanside Army Corps of Engineer project is ahead of schedule, I believe, based on what I've read. On the opposite side, the Bay side, each end, there are some flood measures that are existing or replaced or enhanced, except for North Park. Now, I have taken a rest for being here for an hour and a half to two days. However, during the prior decade, I spoke a great deal about this particular concern. There is no flood protection, which is in fact. Yes, people think there is river rap, which is a little bit too much. There are families, homes, businesses, children, communities. The flooding hasn't occurred for decades. I'm sixty years old. I've lived here over half a century. And the flooding within North Park community is horrendous. The water is continuously level, is why. Whether it's from no protection or the, um, the measures that are, or the storm, drainage, things of that nature, they cannot contain the enormous amounts of water. But basically, the bottom line is we're not protected. Yes, there's funding available to have bulkhead implemented. It's taken too long. At one point in time, the Army Corps of Engineers, there was disruptive themes, from my understanding, going back and forth. I did sit to the Penn State weather project manager at that time. So there were to be some measures that were taken for, as the bill. There were excessive amount of bills. That was about approximately ninety-six thousand feet of bill, which was problematic. Now, it's, I'm here in the town of Penn State. Okay, what is the delay? There should be public need to help within the community. Ask the community. By time, I didn't, sorry, by time, I know. Can I just have another minute to wrap everything up for you? It's a common practice.
We, we have to, to ensure there are people that need to.
It is a common practice. I do think before your times are more than normal, you do allow the residents a sentence or two, if you should.
So you can wrap it up and then, uh.
So I thank you. The urgency is now. The property values, okay, they're selling high and buying low. So it's a great deal of detriment to the community for this, if it exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lake. And we appreciate the comments, that they're very well made. And there are concerns, too. Yes, in the back there.
Well, quickly, I, just, Ms. Lake, I think it's moving too slow for everybody. But could you just reiterate? Sure. I did tell you to touch on the critical infrastructure project too deeply because that wasn't the focus of tonight. This was the North Shore Bulkhead.
And that was the drain, too.
Right. The issue with the Penn of Penn State is a, is a small one, actually, and we are working with them. It's, it follows whether we're going to use an easement for that piece of property because it actually, the borderline of the town is actually on the inside of that, whatever grab and stuff that was put out. So we would have a lease agreement with them or a sale of property. I think that's going to be resolved very soon. But in addition, the, the critical infrastructure bulkhead that we're putting in, we put a tremendous size pump station that's going to help drain the entire area. So it will, it will. And this project was designed, ready to go. Once we have this, this will be going out to bid very shortly. I could see the construction on this side, Joe. What do you think?
As early as, uh, as early as the spring.
As early as the spring, that project would be starting. So you're going to see some of it leak real soon.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Yes. Welcome, sir. Just need your name for the record.
Michael Delory, six two block. I didn't originally plan to ask a question, but it's my understanding the bottom portion of this project is for, for public owned property, non-private. And is it my correct, Commissioner?
That, that's correct. But only the portions that are not covered by, by the Governor's office.
Okay. The second part is for private owners. Let's assume New York Avenue to Nevada that wanted to bulkhead an entire strip. It's roughly three thousand dollars a square foot. If you have thirty frontage, that's about ninety thousand dollar cost.
But that's based on the way we would have to do the bulkhead, not on somebody that was doing it themselves privately. A bulkhead would be much more phenomenal than that. I don't have any prices, okay, but it would be a fraction of that cost.
Which some would be subsidized if it was a private owner dealing with the Gozer funding, if they got funded for the bulkheads.
If, if they got money from New York Rising, it would be funded by them. If there was, if New York Rising money doesn't become available, then would, would the city would bid a contract for various types of bulkhead. Uh, the private property owners could take advantage of the engineering permit where they're approved to do the permitting and the design and then take advantage of the, of, of the contract and then they could pay that back as a tax charge over twenty years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Delory. Good to see you, too. And I think there was some other, yes, sir, please come forward. Thank you. Uh, Mr. McNally. Really, Mr. Delory. Thank you.
Uh, John McNally, six thirteen, my school, not too deep. Uh, former slash current, I don't really know anymore, uh, co-chair of the CRP committee. Um, so I'm not really talking to anyone up here. I'm really directing this more towards the state as this is primarily their process. So I won't name the firm, but a firm did the original engineering work that led us to believe that twelve point four million dollars would be enough to be, uh, complete the bulkhead project and, you know, figured out all its logistics. They were clearly tragically wrong in that. Um, so I think the public would love to know how much they were paid and how much they paid back for work that was clearly not up to snuff. Um, and then process in general. So the last public meeting on this project was March twenty sixteen, uh, March of twenty sixteen. When was this fatal error discovered? Um, and why was the committee not brought back to the table? Unless we're talking about the private portion of this being mandatory, which if it is, I think everyone would want to know. Um, but assuming that is an opt-in program, the entire point behind the bulkhead project was to have a uniform and complete bulkhead along the entire North Shore. That's what would afford us protection. As it is right now, it sounds like there is no plan to do that. Um, so no plan to do that. And moving forward with twelve point four million dollars in investment is basically planning to waste twelve point four million dollars in investment, uh, public dollars, which, a portion of which obviously local residents pay. Um, the CRP committee was never given an opportunity to weigh on this. We were told about it after the fact and after the plan was already brought forward to move forward with what you're talking about tonight. Um, twelve point, there was almost three hundred million dollars worth of resiliency efforts factored into the plan that the committee put together. I'm sure we could have come up with a better use of twenty, twelve point four million dollars uh, to do some of the North Park project and so on and so forth. And speaking about, you know, And speaking about, you know, process, uh, it's epitomized by, this is the first time anyone on the committee has heard about five drainage projects being approved. Uh, we spent hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours of our time analyzing the city and trying to come up with the best effort to protect it. Um, you know, it's basically been torn aside at this stage of the game, for whatever is either politically convenient, or to get the money out the door by the deadlines that are established. So, um, count this, uh, co-chair as discussing with this process. Thanks.
I would just also mention, um, well, I, I realize that those comments, and particularly those first questions, were directed to the state. Um, and I, obviously, we don't know what they've done regarding contractor and everything on the issue. Uh, I, I do think that, and obviously, if committee, with all those hours that we all put in together, across all those months, um, to do that, the price tag of the front of that project would have been twenty-eight million dollars rather than, which is more than the twenty-five total allotment, um, rather than, you know, rather than the twelve point five, um, that would leave, I think, committee would have, you know, looked at other options, which ultimately has now happened. But I, I do think, having, you know, listened to the concerns of the community over a long period of time now, I do think that the folks who live in the interior of the canal, who've been clamoring for that work to be done, are going to be quite gratified, and hopefully, um, sleep better at night knowing that, that that work's going to be done with that.
Welcome, would you speak your name for the record?
George Barkis, West Allen Street. Um, my first question is to City Manager Sherman. Uh, based on the cost of this, what's the tax increase we're looking at?
There's no tax increase. This is money that's coming to us from the state, um, as a passive in the federal government.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, what percent of the bulkhead will be done, what percent is public, what percent is private?
When you give those questions, what's that?
Do you know?
We have to go with the numbers. We have footage that would have been the private bulkhead. I, I don't have the number of private, private, or private.
Twenty percent, forty? Just guess.
I, I'm not going to make a guess. It's not, I'm a professional engineer, I don't make guesses.
And, and last comment, you know? We all know that next time there is a storm, eventually, there'll be another one, and the water comes in, whether, you know, if you don't have the private stuff done, it's just a swell. And, you know, if it has to be done, you really need to be proactive. I'm sure you guys all know this.
And, and I, I think it was, hopefully, it was clear from the earlier remarks, but, um, we're, um, being quite aggressive to work with, uh, the state at options for making that money available, which is, we were talking about with Mr. DeValle earlier. But in the meantime, the city's reopening the bulkhead program that we put out previously.
Uh, I understand you guys, you know, Jack, no matter what anyone says, you are great at getting grants, okay? And everyone here is a story of New York Rising. I mean, you know, I saw the sign when they put it up in Allen Park saying, "No guns allowed." I understood it, because it's just a horrible, horrible process. So whatever you guys can do to get it done, please, just get it done.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, yes, uh, Mr. Bendo? Yes. Welcome, Mr. Bendo.
John Bendo, along with Mr. McNally, I was on the Community Reconstruction Zone Committee. And based on the, um, well, let's take a step back. Um, during the Moby Matt, uh, resolution, as, as you said, it's good to accept things. So I, I guess I want to talk a little bit about accepting responsibility. Um, during the CRP process, we allocated money to bulkhead the entire north shore of Long Beach, with the exception of the part that the governor was doing, which was the center of town, North Park area. Somebody made a huge screw-up in this. And to John McNally's point, we probably could have found better uses of the money. So I would like to know who's responsible for this, and what's their accountability? And I'm getting that glassy-eyed, don't want to answer question, look. Okay? I'll move on now. Uh, Mr. Agostese, is it in the code, is it codified in the ordinances that private homeowners must have compliant bulkheads?
Is it actually specifically codified for private?
Is it codified, yeah, private property must have a FEMA-compliant bulkhead?
No, there's nothing in the code that says that.
So somebody does not have to have a bulkhead, they can choose to have nothing on their property?
That's one interpretation.
Okay, that's not what the committee was told. The committee was told that the city mandates co-compliant bulkheads. So now we're, we're getting a different story.
I'm not sure what you're putting, I'm not, certainly wasn't me who said that to the committee.
I, I, you aren't there, I, I, I get that.
Okay, I'm ready.
But there is nothing in the code that requires private homes to have compliant bulkheads.
The FEMA regulations, uh, yes, I, I, I don't believe you.
Okay, so bulkhead is one side of the, of the canals, and leaving the other side totally unbulkheaded is kind of ridiculous. So let me shift the question to, um, to, um, Mr. Miranda. Which floodgates on the end of the canals make more economic sense to protect the entire canal, rather than bulkheading just one side of the canal? And I realize, this is an off-the-cup response, I don't understand, you have to build calculations in your head.
Well, you know, it depends, because remember, there wasn't going to be enough money to do, to go short bulkhead anywhere. So where we were allowed to spend the money, what told us that, would have prohibited us from just doing the canals and putting dams on, and yet.
So, so the floodgating?
Floodgates would, would not, would work on that. I, I would actually, uh, throw my, my, I'm sorry, but I, but I've had much more experience in this area than I can.
It's like anything, when you look at a level of protection, is your concern a sandy event? Floodgates would provide protection. If you're looking at a ten-year, fifteen-year storm that you typically get more and more times per year, and you're going to lose your roadway into the canal, which will have a flood in it, so that floods more importance from standpoint of protection.
So if, if the city is not prepared to mandate that private property owners get FEMA-compliant bulkheads, what, what is the point of allocating twelve point four million dollars for making a Swiss cheese protection system? You said it, water's opportunistic.
And you, that's an interesting comment, uh, interesting suggestion you're making.
You're trying to make an assumption, though, right, that, that it may not quite be valid, which is that the city's not interested in mandating that. Tonight, we had the resolution that's in front of the City Council, is just, remember, we asked for an update on the overall project, right? And so that's what I'm doing, because we all share in the frustration that we spent a lot of money designing what we thought was a twelve and a half million dollar, uh, thing, that, um, remember, to, to diplomatically answer your first question, because we're trying to get the funding for the private homeowners, you remember who ran that process, and who owned the process, um, which is why John put his remarks the way he did. Um, but remember, what we're doing right now is we're simply doing what's in the city's authority, we're reopening the bulkhead, um, program to private homeowners, because that's the right thing to do, while we offer them the opportunity to, to move forward, we're doing everything we can as a city to make our dollar stretch as, as much as possible. Um, but you, what you're getting at is a, is a secondary, uh, shouldn't say secondary, but is a future policy issue, uh, for the City Council to look at, which is, hey, what ought the regulation be? And I'm sure that that's a conversation that's going to need to happen, uh, in the very near future.
And so, if I can just comment, um, just to respond to your comment. I think that one of the issues that many of the residents approach each of us is that they just don't have the funds immediately to prepare their own bulkhead. And this program, while it's not perfect, and there's all sorts of, of other opportunities and options and different things that we can offer and mandate, there are residents who do want to fix their bulkhead, and we're offering them an opportunity at, at cost, but we're offering them an opportunity to provide the funding while the city's doing their side, while at the same time, we can look for future opportunities to improve it, and the need of offering residents different programs. But right now, there's a little bit we have to do.
I, I understand that, but the point is, this first step is pointless if there's not going to be that second step. That is the point. It's a waste of twelve and a half million dollars if there's not going to follow through to that second step.
So I, I think, like I said before, that was a help, that's a helpful for a future, um, probably, your future discussion. But I, um, having, by the way, John, you were saying, uh, questions and asking them, uh, myself, after we all sat through fourteen hours of the CRP process, you know, I think the thing that, that, you know, I'm sure with you that I, that I run in this process is, um, when we're looking at allocating serious resources, right, we did the contract for twenty-five million dollars, and we're allocating twelve point four, five million dollars towards a twenty, uh, twenty-eight million dollar hole, so to speak, um, this process does get a variety of things done, so that the future gaps can then look to be filled in. Now, that, that's the only, you got to start somewhere, and that's, and this project gets us as far as it can get us with the money that we have. If we can expand the pie, which obviously we always had to do, which is how we got the previous, um, twenty million dollars for the critical infrastructure protection project, um, that Crystal was asking about earlier, that would be terrific. By the way, I would just remind everybody, at the, uh, at the risk of, you know, the people who show up at council meetings, show up on the next side usually. Had we been having the meeting we all intended to have to, to do the, uh, to do this project, the people who'd be here upset might have been people who don't want their bulkhead, uh, on their private property. And by the way, there's hundreds of them. So those people are home, um, feeling relieved, because even all the rest of us are frustrated that we're not getting as much done. So I think you're very, uh, the proper policy question going forward, what the regulation ought to be, and, um, you know, that's, and, and what else needs to be piecemealed to make it whole, so to speak. But, you know, we're moving down the pipe. Unfortunately, none of this has ever been protected, for everything we do is first time. And, and I have heard, um, chapter and verse from the residents of the interior canals, about their needs for protection, and I think we all have.
Mr. Bendo, thank you so much. I appreciate those comments, certainly a very interesting question about mandating, um, you know, something we, we need to discuss. That's right. Are there any other comments from the public on this item, the bulkhead and, uh, the plan? Um, okay, then we are going to move forward. Thank you.
Number six is a resolution confirming the reappointment of three members, and the appointment of two new members to the zoning board of the city of Long Beach.
Okay, actually, um, today might give you a quick overview from a process perspective. Um, folks may remember that we began advertising, um, for applications for the zoning board in September of two thousand and sixteen, almost a year ago. We continually extended the applications, as frankly, we did not receive a lot of applications. The application was posted on the city's main website, Facebook, um, which has an audience on a daily basis of over twenty thousand folks in a city of thirty-five thousand. Um, and we even, uh, you know, were grateful that other local groups, um, shared it as well. We did community e-blast. This has been discussed at many local community meetings, calling, including the chamber, city council meetings, calling for applications. Ultimately, we received six applications and resumes. We reviewed, uh, the applications. There was a, uh, committee that did a review and, um, did an interview process. Um, then the City Council, in, in a very collaborative process, interviewed, um, the candidates as well. And, um, ultimately, uh, the result of the process is recommending several reappointments and, uh, several new appointments.
Hey, are there any comments on this, uh, resolution from the council? Any comments from the public? Yes. This is clear. Yes.
Michael Delory, six June Walk. Uh, six applications, uh, were submitted. I could, you go through who these people are that were selected, why they were selected, what their background is, and what this is, if you can. Because, as we all know, zoning decisions are big dollars in this city. So if you don't mind, I know it's an exhaustive search, but, and I was not meant to be humorous. It's too important to have people sit up here and make decisions that will affect many, my tax bill, their tax bill on zoning, and there are a lot of big issues that still have yet to be decided, as we know. Thank you.
Appreciate it, and, and I appreciate the comment, by the way. I mean, I think it was for all the issues that the zoning board faces over a period of years. Um, on the one hand, perhaps we're surprised that so few apply, and on the other hand, I think you can understand why so few, uh, apply. As, I would remind everybody that it is a board that serves without compensation in any way, shape, or form.
Where?
Okay. Um, okay, so, uh, the, the ultimate recommendation for, for reappointment for the zoning board chairman, Rocco Morelli, uh, who has been a member of the zoning board for over twenty years, lifelong resident of the city of Long Beach. Um, and, uh, as well as Michael Leonetti, uh, who works in commercial real estate, has background in architecture, and has been on the zoning board almost as long as Mr. Morelli. Also, a reappointment for, uh, Mr. Esteban Asavedo, um, who has been on the zoning board for only, I think, approximately, uh, two or three years. And we have, um, forward-looking appointments for Ms. Erica Rechner, uh, who is involved in, uh, the community here, and, um, works with underserved portions of Long Island population, assisting them with career opportunities, as part of the Opportunities Long Island Program, as well as Mr. Dan Creighton, who's an engineer, um, and previous zoning board and community board experience, and works for the FTA.
Okay, I know that there were two hands that, that rose in the back, who have comments on the item. Uh, see, we have more. Okay, so from you, and we'll, we'll go to everyone.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Uh, real quick, uh, Vincent Lysfor, eighteen eighty, Ellison Street. I know I applied, uh, to this community like two or three years ago, when, uh, Mr. Esteban got appointed, and then I got appointed to the position that I went for. But, uh, I was told that my application might sit around for a while, for if it came up again, that I would look at, I would be look at hard, uh, for the position. But right now, I've been teaching high school architecture for sixteen years, and I teach a college a little engineering class. So I hope next time I put my application in, which I will, that I'll be considered for this position.
Okay. Certainly. Thank you. Uh, there were some of the hands that came up in the back, it was, uh, okay, well, from you, and next to you, and even over here. And then the back. It's very, yes.
Yes, good. You're only five, six, you're like, we're like. I just would make this comment, that we only have six people in a, in a city of thirty-three thousand, that we're not reaching those people to, to volunteer for board positions. As you know, it's a conversation we have, have many, numerous times. I think we outreach, whether it be Facebook or the city website, maybe we should look, we should look a little bit further, not just through who shares it on Facebook, and what emails get sent out. I know, again, I personally never received any notification via any, um, email address or anything about any positions ever in, within the city, whether it's volunteer or paid, that said, I think we need to be looking, have a reach out, community for these opportunities, because I believe there are a lot of people I hear that are very qualified. I do also have some concerns about, um, Ms. Rechner's, um, information. I understand that she's also, and I don't know if it's part of it, that she's also involved with, um, labor relations, labor unions, and hiring of labor. And I just want to make sure that that would not be a conflict in any capacity. Um, I'm not sure where Mr. Creighton's. I'm not sure where Mr. Craig's experience comes from. I know that both of them have just given very limited information. So if there were six applicants, or, you know, I don't know who they were, and I'm sure that's probably a question a lot of people are asking, how do we come to the conclusion on those six? So maybe just in the future, we should have a little bit more, or maybe they're here tonight, if they can explain their qualifications for this position.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Yer. Yes, the hand, no, Mr. Vendo, please go forward. Emily, we have this link in the meeting.
John Vendo, doing my usual nerdy self, I looked into the backgrounds of his two new proposed appointees, and I just would like to address something about Ms. Rechner. I don't know Ms. Rechner. She's probably a very nice woman, but what I was able to find out is that she's the director at Opportunities Long Island, which is an initiative of the Nassau Suffolk Building and Construction Trades Council and the Long Island Federation of Labor. They have a wonderful program that they provide training to qualified low-income individuals that prepare them for the apprenticeship program. That's all great. But the motivation for starting Opportunities Long Island was securing work for unions on large development projects. That was a core of their founders. So it sure sounds like having somebody who is tied to securing large development projects on a zoning board would be a conflict of interest. I mean, the zoning laws exist to protect the community from undesirable and overzealous development. It's the job of the zoning board to ensure the purpose of the zoning law is carried out, and that the issuance of a variance reflects the best interests of the community. So if we have someone who the success of her job is tied to securing work on development projects, so they can put people in their program into this, I can't see how that person can make unbiased and dispassionate rulings when developers come to front of the zoning board. It seems like it's a very clear conflict of interest, and I think this needs to be accounted for in this vote. Quite frankly, I think this is very problematic. It's got nothing to do, like I said, I don't know a person, she may be a very nice woman, but this seems to be a clear conflict of interest. Then one other point is, I'd like to know how the Haberman suit factored into these decisions as well, since two of the reappointees were involved in this issue. This has probably been a cost to the city well over fifty million dollars, even though we haven't paid it yet. It's kind of come down, and I'd like to know if that also factored into the decision.
I wasn't involved in the decision-making process, but I would advise the council to forego a countdown to the application, especially if it's doing.
Oh, I'm not looking to comment specifically on the outcome. I'm just saying, was this a factor in the decision of reappointing these people? I mean, this was, yeah, I think if you all agree this was something the city really didn't want to happen, if these people were part of that, is that without a factor? And, again, I'm getting that glassy eye stare. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vendo. Okay, and I believe, before we get to this part right here, we have, I believe, this lake was next, and then we can go back there to the person in the back again, and then we have. You're welcome.
These particular individuals will have a great charge over their current developments. So there are so many overlapping components there that I really believe that we should really take an in-depth look at their qualifications, their current positions, former positions, because the development of the debate, which is ongoing, it will occur. It's going to come to conclusions a lot similar than many believe. However, hopefully, it will be a process that many will have an opportunity to benefit from. And I'm just going to write this, and I hope, please second, I'll just respect that. It should not be that we have to, okay, the city of Long Beach here has always been about families, whether you are wealthy, whether you are poor, however, the history does state, okay, Long Beach would make with the opponent, okay, and there needs were catered to. However, over decades, it has grown to reflect an unfortunate, poor individual and the afford. But a thriving community is diverse in economics, social, and everything. So for it to work, because we've already tried to have a well-run community, and it failed. You know why it failed? Due to greed, okay? I was here when all of the apartments, all the high-rise, the garden apartments were there. And I'll be quite honest with you, the landlords, the chief landlords, they drained the properties, took all the money and ran. So history can be paid so. So there should be an opportunity for housing, employment, education, social and cultural opportunities across the board. And to have that, the zoning board is going to play the major role. So having said that, please, with where we were, where we came from, and where we are today, of course, the living is natural. Okay, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lake.
Question, Charles, I just want to make a comment to address some of the concerns that Ms. Lake presented. I just want to say that in terms of the process and the interviewing process, that some of the concerns that you raised did come up in the discussion as well as the questions that were asked to the applicants. In addition, my fellow colleagues will tell you that I made an appeal with respect to diversity of ideas, as well as cultural and racial diversity, that we would have a broad representation in terms of the committee. We did make the efforts to reach out to as many people as possible, and I just want to connect your point to a point that was raised with respect to Ms. Biora's point, that we have to find a way to get the civics more involved. I think what I feel to reach out to a lot of civics and individuals who are a part of those communities, because we wanted to get a wire, net, cast a wire net in terms of people, and it's my understanding that another position will be available in December, and I hope that, again, we'll have another opportunity to make sure that some of these things happen. But in terms of the process itself, the individuals who share the information, share their expertise, or in some cases, lack of expertise in this area, I want to say, does reflect some of the diversity of thought and will and diversity of experiences. I just wanted to let you know that that was a part of the conversation and was a part of the process.
In response to your comments, which I thank so much for, they are not, I'm just, this one, I have a comment. It's not diverse enough. First of all, I'm going to be quite honest, if you're not on Facebook, if you're not going on the city site, the information isn't available for the masses. It's for the normal users, to be quite honest. So how you reach other individuals, it's not a diversity. You have to have individuals from various backgrounds, I understand, and the component to get the project and the forward expedition. However, the union component may be a minority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lake. A blue to shell lady, the woman in the front and the back, did she want to speak first? Welcome, we, just leave your name to the record.
Sure. Let me just get.
Circle.
I apologize, I have a little bit of a cold.
That's okay.
Back in the month, I lived on this tenement. I'd like to address the exhaustive job search that Mr. Scherer's attempted, because I've been signed up for over two years for any committees or opportunities with the city, and I didn't get a single notification or email. So I'm kind of curious as to what you were visiting and what qualifications you were searching for for a zoning board opportunity.
So I'm going to hold up the application for you, which has been sitting on the city's website.
It's sitting on the city's website that's posted. He said it was a search. I mean, it's nifty, but a search means inactive till staying outside the city website. If there's an opportunity and it has to be a search, I'm assuming, if I were looking for somebody to fill the position that I have available, I would put it outdoors and not just have it scattered on my own personal website.
We didn't do that, but you have three minutes to share your thoughts and your views.
I just shared it. I'm asking you what search you did. Posting it on the website, inactive search. If it's exhaustive, it means you've looked in all corners.
Yeah, I didn't say exhaustive search. I said the city went through a year-long process where we advertised the, we advertised the postings repeatedly.
So the qualifications, conflict of interest, is one of those qualifications that you search for or one of the ones that you discard?
I'm going to let you share your thoughts and your views.
I asked you a question. The fact of my thoughts, I'm asking you a question, which is, it's really a question.
I'm going to wait until you finish your remarks, and then.
So somebody who works on apprenticeship programs with large-scale developers, is that a conflict of interest?
From a legal standpoint, no. You have to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis.
A case-by-case basis?
Correct.
Really?
From a purely legal standpoint, if you get out of the debate, that's why.
So just for example, if you're already facing litigation in, I don't know, someone else, off the top of my head, fifty million, with zoning board decisions, that might feel questionable or might have been just not really the best decision at that time, and the city's facing litigation, maybe when you're looking for new people to fill the zoning board, a conflict of interest, somebody you're trying to employ, maybe something that you wouldn't want, or maybe you would, depending on what someone's goal are, to be filling that slot. Those are my thoughts. I ask a couple of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, in the back, we, the gentleman there, and then we'll go back to Mr. Cusman.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thirty-eight East Beach Street. I just wanted to address a few comments on this appointment. Development has obviously been a very high and contentious issue in this town for the last year or so, and the ZBA has played a fundamental role in all of that, including, unfortunately, the ISAR debacle and the Haverden debacle. And it's heavily engaged right now in how that race process, and there is the complexity and uncertainty of the comprehensive plan of redevelopment in the North Side, in which the ZBA at some point may play a role. So what that says to me, given this very recent painful history, is that it is critical that the city not take any hasty steps in employing ZBA members. And even if it's without precedent, I think it makes sense to step back and make sure that candidates are fully met, not just by yourselves and whatever committee, let's have it reported, but that you meet with the civics and engage with the city that's been very active with respect to ISAR and with respect to the how, unfortunately, less so have Haverden. And I would ask that you hold off on making this decision for thirty days while you engage with the civics, and perhaps during that time you do the, we know that at least you have Mr. Lee's resume, and he's interested, maybe you consider him and see who else is available. Unfortunately, I think that the city has not earned the benefit of the doubt, given the ISAR, Haverden, and the Bakels, and the exact opposite. And I would recommend to you, not just for our interest, but for your own interest, that you step back from this and take that break, take thirty days and do some of those things. Thank you very much.
Made just a semantic point, but the resolution agrees that the two new appointees are going to fill the, using the exact term now, the expired term of Stuart Vancheck and Dan Wright. I don't know how you fill the expired term. It's expired, it's expired. The only way you can be able to fill it would be using unexpired portion of their term that had not completed. The only reason I raise that issue is reading through the provision of the charter that establishes the zoning board and its initial establishment, it recalls the appointment of two members in one day, two members for two years, and three members for three years, thus creating a stagger, like every year is going to be term over in the makeup of the board. It goes on to say, they, I'm sorry, all successor terms shall be three years. Now, that means that if somebody's on the board and they are reappointed, their reappointment is for a term of three years. Neither of his regular or left term or Mr. Craig's, I don't believe we're filling, that your appointment to a three-year term from the get-go, I think that under the method of circulation, you don't need unexpired terms of the members that they were placing. The other thing is that this creates a situation where you're going to have five members who are going to be up for replacement at the same time. That clearly conflicts with the intent of the council when it enacted the legislation to create the zoning board where there's supposed to be that kind of term. Now, you're going to give these five people pursuant to this resolution a three-year unimpeded run, and you're not going to see the staggering of any terms that's set forth in the enacted legislation to create the zoning board. I think somebody dropped a ball here, I don't want to point fingers, but I think you guys know where I've been going with this. You need to, I think, consider tableing this until you determine whether or not this run of five appointments that all are going to expire on the same day, twenty twenty, points with the city charter.
If you're going to consider tableing it, you wouldn't do it on that basis because that legal analysis is flawed and happened, they are invalid holders under relevant case law, and that's it. The resolution is completely legitimate now.
So how do these staggering of terms occur? Is this?
There's been a lot of updates in case law that happened.
I see. So this is old stuff that I'm reading on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cusman. Thank you. In the comments, yes, it's.
I need attention five sixteen West Beach Street. Considering the amount of disruption has been regarding different developments in Long Beach over the past year, from Half to all, you know, the North Park, everywhere, the questions that the residents have had, I'm begging you to please listen to the residents, listen to what they're saying about development and big buildings and everything else, and table this appointment. If this woman is working with big developers, she does not belong on this zoning board at this time. Please agree to table this. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this item? Yes, Matt, please come up.
I'm not sure my comment.
You have to relay it.
Sorry, it's two-two-eight, my space drive. I'm not sure my comment is on this subject, but I don't want to pass the subject and then not have. not have a comment.
But you can only comment on this subject right now.
Well, it is a comment on the subject. Who is in charge within the zoning board? What are the rules for businesses to open up in, um, in the business district? Like, in other words, an owner of a property in the business district area, can he open any store, rent to any store business he wants?
Well, it's not, again, it's not related to the side of your question. What I would encourage you to do is bring a specific question to the building.
I did, over there.
To the building issue, and that's where you start.
Oh, building, what is it, the building?
The building issue, correct.
Okay. And then walk the bike and all that is coming up?
No, walk it through the process, depending on what type of business you're running.
No, okay, good. And walk the bike, is that coming up tonight?
It's gonna walk there, correct. Yes, it is coming up.
Sorry, can you?
Yes. Okay, are any other comments on the item regarding the zoning board developments? Okay, let's move on to our next item.
Okay, number seven, is the resolution authorizing publication of hearing of ordinances of City of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic. This item is for publication only and hearing is to be held September fifth at seven P M. Item number eight has been temporarily removed from the agenda. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to prevent the photo ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding vehicles. This item is for publication only and hearing is to be held September fifth at seven P M. Item number ten is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to authorize the financing for the acquisition of two manuage traffic and planning of beach conversations in a lifeguard headquarters facility. Stating the estimated total cost of such car produce is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, procreating set of down there for, and authorizing issuance of not exceed three hundred and eighty-five thousand bonds of said cities to finance said corporations. This item is for publication only and hearing is to be held September fifth at seven P M. Item number eleven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to make the Wall Street parking requirement for President sixty-eight West Park Avenue, second floor, Long Beach, New York, regarding the obvious losing construction facility. This item is for publication only and hearing is to be held September fifth at seven P M. Item number twelve is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to make the Wall Street parking requirement for President eight seventy-two West Beach Street, Street four, Long Beach, New York, regarding police action routine. This item is for publication only and hearing is to be held September fifth at seven P M. And that's on the voting motion. Item number four has been voted on, and item number two has been tabled. Item number three, resolution authorizing city manager to assess the charitable donations. Will we introduce the adoption of this item?
I'll introduce her.
I'll second.
On the vote, Councilmember Diamond?
Once again, I wanna thank the commanding officers for providing us with this additional footage of the moment we met. It's certainly a wonderful opportunity for us to come together to make it more accessible for our residents with that idea.
Councilmember four?
Just once again, thank you, commanding officer of the association, for always putting the community first, and my vote is yes.
Vice President Aronoff?
Thanks again, President Dodge, my vote is yes.
President George?
And again, thank you for a very important definition to this cause, and my vote is yes.
Item number four, resolution authorizing city manager to enter into contract for engineering design and construction administration services for the rehabilitation of the one hundred block of West Market Street between National and Main Road in Long Beach. Will we introduce the adoption of this item?
I will.
Two seconds?
I will.
On the vote?
I will.
Councilmember Diamond?
I will.
Councilmember four?
Yes.
Vice President Aronoff?
Yes.
President George?
Yes.
Item number five, resolution authorizing city manager to enter into agreement for engineering services needed for separation of wall paint clearing and contract. Will we introduce the adoption of this item?
I will.
Two seconds?
I'll second.
On the vote, Councilmember Diamond?
And just before everyone, I wanna once again echo some of the comments that were made before. Obviously, this is just one step that we can take. If there's more that we can do, we should continue to look into opportunities to help the residents and become resilient for future storms of light. With that, I will yes.
Councilmember four?
Yes, once again, I just wanna echo Councilwoman Diamond's statement, let's do whatever we can to assist our residents, and I vote yes.
Vice President Aronoff?
I agree with my colleagues, I vote yes.
President George?
Yes.
Item number six, the resolution supporting the expiration of three members and requiring two new members to the zoning board of the City of Long Beach. Will we introduce the adoption of this item?
President Tore, I am. The item will be tabled until we have further information or want to.
Okay, let's say, there's a motion on the floor, there's a motion, so by Miss Moore. Okay, do, okay, go ahead.
Where is the second on the motion?
Second on the motion.
Tabled item number six.
Oh, come on. Now we know.
We're waiting. Second on the. We're waiting for a second on the motion.
Go in one. Okay. Well, remember this during lunch.
Okay, the motion is done, it's done.
Thank you, Joseph. Thank you, Mr. George.
Okay, let's, we need to control ourselves here, folks. And I would appreciate that if you were to do that. Thank you. Okay.
Vice President Bowie, item number six. Will we introduce the adoption of this item?
I will.
Two seconds?
I will.
On the vote? Councilmember Diamond?
Um, after, this was a pretty extensive search. We did a number of interviews, we spoke with the individuals, a number of different times, we considered their backgrounds, and I believe that both are qualified. To the extent that there is an individual vote that requires someone to repeat themselves, it's a responsibility that anybody sitting on any board needs to consider before they vote on any item. So with that, I vote yes. And I wanna thank those who have served, and are continuing to serve, and those who are no longer serving, I wanna thank them for their service to the community.
Councilmember four?
No.
Vice President Aronoff?
Um, I agree with Councilwoman Diamond. We all collectively interviewed the candidates and spoke at high about vision for the city, and all the two new appointments presented themselves in a way that I think reflected all of us at the time. The entire council wasn't agreement at the time, and my vote is yes.
President George?
My vote is yes.
Will my vote close this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Two seconds?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Vice President Aronoff?
Yes.
Vice President George?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, folks, we now enter the good and welfare portion of our meeting, and I will call up the folks in the order they were obtained.
We're about to, we're gonna have to entertain a vote to reopen the meeting. There's no vote to reschedule all the meetings. I'm lucky, I'm just.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can do it, okay. So I'm going to take the vote on.
I make a motion reopen the meeting.
I'll second.
Very good.
So now we go.
We have the vote.
I'm sorry.
By the order of opening up the meeting.
We're gonna open up the meeting on the vote. Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah.
President, Vice President Aronoff?
Yes.
President George?
Yes.
Now we go back to the voting question on publication-only hearing.
Hearing.
Do we use the number each number? Do we use the whole?
I think we'll do nine. Yes. I think we make a motion.
Number seven is the one.
To make, to make a public hearing, nine through twelve.
We can do it collectively.
Okay.
Together.
Okay, and two seconds?
I will.
On the vote? Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Councilmember four?
Yes.
Vice President Aronoff?
Yes.
President George?
Yes.
Now we need to close.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to close.
And two seconds?
I will.
On the vote, Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Council Vice President Aronoff?
Yes.
President George?
Yes.
Sorry for that little, uh, little mess up there. We need to now begin our good and welfare, and as soon as I get those, we'll be calling up folks. Again, we appreciate folks staying with us this late, and it's an important part of what we believe needs to be done here, and this is just as important as our votes. Okay, uh, Mike, good work, still here with us, and thank you for staying with us. Please come forward, those that could see and could hear.
Good evening, members of the city council. Just gonna hand out some information. Yes, Michael Glory, six-year walk from Long Beach, New York. I think each one is labeled and highlighted, okay? Pass that out, this way we could be on the same page when we discuss this. Well, I'd like to publicly thank Commissioner Lando. We had a walkthrough about a month ago with the walks. I know President Tariquish, who as we mentioned many months ago, about the importance of the water distribution, specifically walks. Commissioner Lando, Meg, and myself, and Tom, that, had twenty-sixth December walk, and we conducted a walkthrough with drainage and distribution, and I wanna publicly thank Commissioner Lando for that, for his time. What I had just handed to you was, it has to do with Neo Postal, it's a restaurant. Back in February, I was here, and my concern at the time was that, A, I wanted it to be successful, I want it to be very successful. I don't want it to be very successful with the demise of all the residents even around that sort of area. Most recently, parking on that corner, which is near New York Avenue and west, near New York Avenue, uh, just, just north of Beach Street, there's a post office box there. There is a faded yellow line. When there are cars parked there, and you have trucks on the truck route making a turn, it's very difficult. Or most recently, your truck couldn't make it backed up and knocked over a street post on the, on the south west corner that's, knocked it over so much, it could've gotten hurt. It's a major problem. I'm sure most of you have heard me say this before. What I had handed to you is something on May twenty-third, and I wanna thank city manager Schnerman and whoever else was involved in rectifying what happened on that day. They put up an warning on West Beach Street, there's a plant, it's about eighteen inches of space. Believe me, I've gotten a lot of complaints in and around the area. Stones can't go by them, icicles can't go by. It was a problem. Thankfully, it was rectified and removed the same day. About a week ago, they did the same thing. So my point is, you have to penalize bad behavior.
Mr. Glory, you bring it up, sir.
Thank you. So.
Thank you for the handout. Very good.
Oh, this picture, it took me his destination, so I mean, as far as the code is concerned with sidewalk dining, this is not only this particular location.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I'm trying to be helpful, I'm trying to put the area which I live and others.
We know you are, and we appreciate it very much, what you're saying. I personally, you know, was there for nine months and experienced exactly what you're saying. So I, I don't wanna defame the Neo Postal, but I, it is, it is a major, major problem when the only place you can park is four or five blocks away from where you live. It's hard.
Well, I, I agree, it's not really the parking, it's the management of your business enterprise inside and out.
Yes, yes.
That's my point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glory. Thank you. Okay, uh, our next person is Ms. Allison Blanchett, is still here?
Check her email at that.
I'll check. Okay, and Kevin Fuchs, I'm still not pronouncing your last name properly, Kevin Fuchs, is still here? And Kevin, it's a month. Okay, Mr. Gussel, Jay Gussel.
Good evening again, Jay Gussel. I wasn't sure, I heard this back in D.C. right earlier, about this judgment, I prefer to a behavioral judgment, I don't know if it's fifty million dollar judge, not above a dollar, but fifty million dollar, I mean, it's been tossed around. Is that something that we're free to discuss?
I would say it's very inadvisable, considering, Mr. Gussel.
Well, how about this, how about not getting into specifics and just asking procedurally, what's the next step? Where are we, you know, there are future proceedings, are we gonna be, you know, a bond issue, you know, put it forward to council, I mean, what's, what's the next step?
I think you break the heart for divorce, you know, right now.
That's what I'm trying to find.
Right now, we're assessing our options in terms of whether or not to, to move the reargain with a second apartment, or seek legal appeal with the court appeals, we don't know how that's gonna shake out just yet. In a way, we will be preparing for adoption request.
Okay, so this is still very moving in?
I can all agree, yes.
What's the, what's the worst-case scenario for us? It happens?
There's no way it's gonna work.
All right, we're gonna give a shout.
Here, Mr. Gussel, thank you. And our next person is Mr. Vincent Lees. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
Ah, Lees.
Lees?
Maybe the one, maybe the two. Uh, Vincent Lees, four eighteen East Hudson Street. This is a quick question, just on my own things, I know, too, you guys, I've looked at your homes, and you paid your road opening fees, and your permits, and your deposits, correct, so, uh, first. I'm trying to get my deposit back. I've been calling the city hall, public parks, since January, finding that I was on a list, but then it was a wrong list, then it was another list, and the list was for the outside agency that comes in, contractor that comes in to do the final meeting, in front of where they opened up, your sewer, your water, and I've been going back and forth, I've been being very nice, every two weeks, I place upon all the people in the public parks, pardon, super nice, cordial, but at first, the first couple of months, it was like, whatever, what's your name? What's this for? And it's been like, I've been on pretty poor lists, and it's been going on since January. And look, two hundred and fifty votes, a hundred bucks, you know, a bill's twenty dollars, a lot, but that type of money feeds my two little children, feeds my wife, keeps me in diapers, but every time I call now, I ask, when is this contractor coming back to do jobs? And then like, a couple of months ago, it was like, oh, they're almost ready, they'll be back next week, they'll do local innings and stuff, you're definitely on the list, you're gonna get it. That's where it was more later, I could call again, and I'd keep going, and it's never any story, when this contract, is there a contract that actually does this? I called today at ten a.m. The lady was very nice, she's like, I'll call you back in an hour or two, still waiting for phone call. So I'm just trying to figure it out, I get a couple of votes back.
I mean, you could be blessed with your, your contact information, I think, on the board, so.
Yeah.
So, just a little reminder, make sure that you, that you get an answer.
Yeah, if it's me, if it's only me, then it's not only me, but like, maybe, I'll take the whole area.
The commissioner, the deputy commissioner, right there, why don't you introduce yourself immediately after?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lees.
You'll be the building.
Yeah, you can build.
Build all the parks, all the parks.
Okay, they write up the street, and it's probably worth it. Okay, our next person is Ms. Yori, Ms. Yori, welcome again, here. Here.
Good evening again. Ms. Yori, 516 West Broadway. Since the last meeting is canceled and the rest of you kind of got the notification, I just would like, a little bit of an exception date. Might really be three minutes time limit tonight. It should be quick. We got all the questions down. I'd like to make sure we hopefully get all these questions answered. We'll talk about it again, as you spoke about earlier. This began with board decommissions and the updates on the application from November of 2016. Obviously, besides the zoning board application that we did now. So I'm happy to help. Try to get spread the word. Any positions and any boards and any commissions in the city of Long Beach, you need to get out there. We have a wide network of reaching, targeting people that we could probably help in certain situations. Next comment or question is about panel together. Has the city determined costs associated with the LGBT three-day event? Would we reimburse any of the money spent on overtime? Or anything that was spent against the city services? If not, when should we be expecting reimbursement to the city? I'll go through all the questions first.
Okay.
It might be easier, I'm sorry. Trying to, yeah, do it in time. Has the city received any info about the Toro Law? I did FOIL request. I know sometimes you have to FOIL information. If you don't FOIL it correctly, you don't necessarily get... You get told that the information is not available. So Toro Law, as we all know, was the people that were hired to relook at our zoning codes. And they should be making recommendations, suggestions, et cetera. So I don't know if you've received that information based on my FOIL request. We have not. So I just want to make sure that's... Yes, we want to make sure that's confirmed. I'd like to thank Ms. Raina. Light are on on the bay. You can see the vote launch. Thank you for that. I'd like to thank, also, we spoke about Cool Clock back in April. It arrived. Thankfully, when it came to July, it actually made it up on the pool deck. Not the department's fault, but at least, you know, it's made it out of the back room. So thank you for that. Is the comprehensive plan going to be on the agenda any time soon for the public hearing? I know we gave them, we waited two weeks notice, but I would like a little bit more notice than just two weeks to get back to school coming up. And I know there's a lot of teachers, you know, parent-teacher conferences and things. So if something that's going to be on September, anywhere in the August and September agendas, we should have notifications soon and then later. Two comments that came back that we've been seeing. We've had some cancellations on city events due to weather. You know, suggested that while it's posted on Facebook, maybe some mobile call or something that can go out. Impossible, I know, is the last minute thing. But I happened to be up on the board for the Irish night, and there was a significant amount of people up there waiting. They didn't know it was canceled. We weren't able to notify them. So maybe that's an opportunity. The mobile app response question I have, who monitors it daily? There's a lot of conversation about why no responses go out.
Did you ever get some of them?
I don't know. I did ask for a few. Just an extra question, just to get the question out.
We have a client with people, and we need to...
Okay, well, we have some counseling, and then cancel.
I know.
So it's not really fair. This question has to be raised. Anissa, I'll leave that at here because that's a conversation.
Thank you again, Ms. Yori. We appreciate your questions. Thank you.
So we got any answers to any questions?
I'm happy to give you some quick answers to those questions. I think the board decommissions was updated already. And I think, as I said in previous meetings, the first move would be the zoning board. The cost of the LGBT weekend, as I had said previously, there will be reimbursement. And I know that that process has obviously not commenced until the event is over. Toro Law, there is a zoning code process. I don't think we have one to take at yet. I see a part shaking.
No, did we receive the information? The first question I had.
The city hasn't passed a comprehensive plan yet, so we're not into the zoning process yet. So I'm good to go.
Toro was supposed to submit the information to the city. Has the city received the recognition from Toro?
I'm trying to say yes. I'm trying to say no. Hold it quick. Great, on the lights in the bay. I saw the Cool Clock, too, when I was swimming recently. The comprehensive plan will be on the agenda as soon as the council is ready to vote on it. As a reminder of how the process works with the comprehensive plan, you have to do a public hearing. You have to notice that public hearing. So you have a two-meeting cycle there. And the council cannot vote at the initial public hearing. So you have at least, you have a three-meeting cycle then. And finally, the issues that are submitted to the mobile app go to the department that the, it wraps directly to the department that the issue is due. So it's a, how it works, it goes from works to building, to building, and so on and so forth.
I get the rest of that question out. And if they, I don't know, want to hear it or not, but the one people that they ask, who monitors it, when they send out their response or send out a question on the mobile app, if nobody responds, therefore, they don't, number one, they don't know if they're getting it. Whoever is receiving it, is getting it? That's number one. I mean, they want to know, are they getting it? Is the issue being looked at? And is it going to be addressed? And by, maybe, by, it will be addressed within 48 hours or a response to who the person is sending it? Because I will tell you, again, if you go back and you look at someone, if you want to use Facebook as a gauge of some kind, people will tell you that they send stuff all the time to the mobile app response. Whatever is being sent is not getting addressed because it's been on mobile all the time. I'm only making a suggestion to you because I, it was fine that we have a problem here with communication from the city and the residents back and forth. All they're asking is, yes, we did receive it? Maybe we don't, maybe nobody wants to tell them that you got it. Because then, you know, perhaps, you don't, they can say, you can say, you didn't get it, therefore, we didn't know about it. But they're saying that they send stuff all the time. Certain instances, things are getting taken care of right away. And other instances, three months, problems go to us. So I have my time is up.
So here's how it works. When you submit something to the mobile application, like I said a moment ago, it goes to the department to be questioned. You are, by the way, if you get a number or tab, right, you can look up where your issue is in process at any given time. You should receive something that says it's been received. And you should be able to track that at any given time. The department to be questioned is the one that's responding to you. Though, something like this is a terrific management tool and, you know, helps us see how we're responding to things. My office also monitors the submissions as they go. Takes a look if something is overdue or something and sort of gets a nudge and says, what's going on? Brian, actually, over there in my department, takes a look and looks over it. So if you have a particular request that you were looking for, let him know, and he'll look at it. And this is how we make sure that we're responding to things quickly. I would, though, disagree with you that I have, the feedback that I generally get on the app is quite quick and it's quite responsive. And I encourage everybody to go through it. It used to be the only way, right, in Long Beach and any other places, was you had to know someone to get something done. The whole point of an app like this is to be a great equalizer so that anyone can receive timely, responsive, efficient, accountable services from City Hall. We want to make sure that that's what's happening. So if there's anything you're not getting a response to on the app, let us know.
You're up, sure. No problem. Thanks.
And also, more importantly, you can, if the app wasn't ready, you just...
Exactly. Exactly. If you look at, people who are...
Okay, we're going to move on to our next person. And that's Mr. John Ashman. He's still here? John?
No, he's not here.
Okay. Mr. Bendo. You have a slot here?
I'm not even here in front of you. I was a shit.
All right. Okay. Tina, or Tina Kirks?
Tony.
Kirks?
Tony.
Tony, I see.
I see.
I couldn't see the owner there.
I'm Tina Tom.
Welcome again. This is Kirks.
How do you do? Okay. Is there a law in Long Beach that you have to walk your bikes on the sidewalks? Why is it not enforced? Especially in the business district? Which is, you know where that is, right? It goes from Magnolia to Long Beach Road on the South Side.
I believe that it's enforced, it may not have been...
No, it's not. People ride their bikes back and forth on the sidewalks. Knocking little old ladies down, children, handicapped, you know. And if a little old lady or little old man has a severe process, that's hospital time. So what should we do about it?
Well, again, you know, because you were saying, bicycles on the sidewalk, riding the bikes there, this is necessarily, you know, with enforcement.
Well, I'm on the sidewalks all the time. Let me say, I'm on the sidewalks all the time, walking my bike. And bikes are whizzing by me all the time. And I told the police, just open your window and say, walk your bikes. They would get off the bike with a uniform, right? I mean, I tell people when they curse me, shit me, run me down because I'm a citizen. So what should we do about it?
We can, we can...
No, I'm just going to say that our police commissioner is here. Maybe you'd like to just come up and direct the issue?
I would mention, by the way, that, probably...
All right, the clock is running.
Every summer, we have our special...
I'm just gonna... I'm just gonna...
Thank you. So every summer, we have our special officers do...
No one's on the sidewalk here.
Okay, I'm going to just finish my setup.
Go ahead.
Every summer, we actually have our special officers do, because we have quite a lot of issues along Park Avenue there on the sidewalk. And this is why we all look forward to when we get protected by planes on Park Avenue.
Okay.
When that project...
That's the future, right?
And this is your future, yes.
And we are, and the city of Long Beach is kind of on strict budget now with that loss that they lost, correct? So money's not going to be so available. So how about we put up some big signs on each block in the business district that says, walk your bikes? Just like, walk your bikes on the ramp on each. Because a lot of people that I spoke to, and when I say, get off your, you know what, bikes and walk it so you don't hurt anyone, they say, well, we didn't know. And that little sign, one or two of them, that have a little bicycle with a wrist latch through it, it's not really clear what that means. No lights on the sidewalk? Or what? So how about walk the bikes?
We have the signs, not too much money. The police commissioner is right behind you.
Yeah, Miss Kirks.
He can address it.
This is our police commissioner. Do you permit him to make a comment? Miss Kirks? Yeah, we just need her to hear from the commissioner.
Oh, do you want to get up here?
Absolutely.
Okay, yes, there are a couple things. We do not have, we have a regulation that children can ride on lights on sidewalks.
Did you have a little finish?
The second thing is, we do not sign on Park Avenue prohibiting bike riding. The signs have to conform to the manual control license that is determined by the National Highway Safety Administration. So we can't just put a big sign if we want to. It has to conform to the manual. We do do enforcement. One of my special officers actually hurt her. Okay. Have a listen.
How does it play back? Now, the next issue.
Okay. Miss Kirks, it's very important that a person finish their comment first.
Why is that?
Well, he thought you were interrupting him.
Why?
Okay, well...
Come back.
No, no. Miss Kirks, it's okay. Finish up your three minutes.
Okay, so no walk-the-bike signs? So I have to dodge bikers again? Is that what we're doing? Nothing gets done. I don't know. If you have to walk the bike, walk the bikes on the ramp, why can't you have walk the bikes on sidewalks?
I think, I think what the police commissioner just said, we don't, we're not legal to just put a brand on...
Well, what am I able to do?
Why don't you have the... Just let me finish for a second. Okay. The issue is that if there is enforcement, and I believe the commissioner was about to continue. I know you're shaking your head no. But there is enforcement. We have a great police force that works very hard.
I love it.
They matter enough, let me mention, our police force. I do as well. That being said, there is a big city, and if there's...
Not big. It's in Long Beach. New York City...
We appreciate, we're going to take this under advisement of what you said. We appreciate talking about it. Thank you.
Now, you don't want the little old ladies crash jam on the sidewalks, right?
No, we don't. Thank you, Miss Kirks. Thank you, Miss Kirks.
Well, I'm not... Do you have a Long Beach Health Inspector? A Long Beach City Health Inspector? That goes around, you know, making sure restaurants serve clean and that kind of thing?
There's a Department of Health from the county.
Oh, that's it? So I have to go to them, too?
Yeah, Superstate.
Bar tenders are touching food with their hands after they touch money. So where do I go?
Because the Department of Health in Nausicaä. I don't have a number.
Now to Long County, okay. And my next question is about the zoning with repainting the sidewalks for bus stops and for no parking areas. So we know where the buses come. What about that? It's just a little yellow paint. It's for a time.
Yeah, we're going to take all that under advisement.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you again, Miss Kirks.
Have a good day.
Okay. Now, now. I think it's gone. Okay, Catherine.
The cops don't need to be bothered with walking the bike, do they?
Thank you.
Special force, please. Special force.
Catherine Demont, or Demont? Don, sorry. DeSesh. DeSesh, I'm sorry, because that's your name before. I don't know if, must be the jet lag. Over to you.
9816 West Beach. This is probably for Commissioner Tackney as well. I think there's been a lot of breaking into cars, stolen bicycles, even when they're locked, and even broken windows. The only thing that's affected me is breaking into the cars, but I'm wondering if there could be some more patrol, like a police or something for these things? It sounds like, you know, groups of teenagers going around and were doing vandalism, but it's, you know, it's not good, so...
Is this something affecting one part of town, or...
Well, I've seen on Facebook, it looks like it's happening in the canals quite a lot. It was in my part of town as well. And I spoke to Commissioner Tackney about it a while ago. But it looks like it's rampant.
I think we should, just as a response to your question, I think we should encourage our residents to take advantage of the bike theft prevention program that the police department has. I know there's some deeds that are coming up. It's a great opportunity for us to, in the event that unfortunately a bike is stolen, that the police department has a way of tracking and attempting to get it back in a quick manner. There are deeds coming up, it's my understanding, at different times. And it's something that our residents should take advantage of.
Some of them are, people are picking up bikes and taking them to where they need to be and then just dropping them. They didn't walk there. It's vandalism. But broken windows and broken mirrors on cars and things like that. I'm not sure. So there's a lot of it going on. He's gone. Also, I just wanted to say I'm very disappointed again that you didn't table that so many important things because it does sound like she has a conflict of interest. And I keep thinking that we're going to have all these big buildings here and the destroyed infrastructure in our beautiful city. And by the time that happens, the people who voted for her and for these things are going to be gone, all gone. Thank you very much.
DeSesh, thank you so much. And thank you for staying with us. Mr. Jim Kirkland? Jim, glad you stayed with us, too.
The other day, I was walking down to the park from Kirk's side. And I had to be passing by the walls in front of Pier One. And I have to say, it was rather an embarrassment. You really make, you really have a chance to make one first impression. And that is a terrible one to make because not only did the plants look ratty, but it was probably outnumbered by the amount of crabgrass growing there. And while I understand it's nearing the end of the season, you know, maybe if you just clean it up, I mean, just bring down, you know, some mulch or something to make it in a fruit or what's already there, or maybe plan going forward for some fall foliage.
Is this on park or...
It's between walnut and bark.
Walnut and bark.
Yeah, it should come right out of, you know, the Pier One parking lot.
Oh, I see. I know exactly where you're going.
Yeah. And it just looks like such a surprise because normally it looks good. It's like the vast and parlor land. I can't even imagine why, you know. And it probably extends up the street. I wasn't going in that direction. Going down towards Park.
We need to look into that.
You know, it's one who I have people that come to my home and take pictures of themselves in front of my house. Total strange ones do this. And that's how much I appreciate trying to make my house look good for everybody else. So we do appreciate that. I'll do it for people, too.
I'm going to look into that, Mr. Kirkland. Thank you so much. Folks, thank you for staying this late with us. This is the end of our meeting. And again, I appreciate everyone's comments. I think we need to have a little circle again. Thank you, and get home safe.